Okay, I'll call the meeting in order. I'd just like to welcome all the attendants here this evening and I would like to introduce our council for this evening also. We have our councillor Peter Campbell on my far left, councillor Dorothy Kleiber on my left, councillor Mike Pagtican on my right, and councillor Buscetti on my left, right, sorry. And I'm the mayor, sorry. So I guess we'll go down to delegations. We have Sergeant Kenneth McKeckren here to do a report on September policing. Just if you could proceed.
How's it going, guys?
Good.
You guys all have a copy of the report?
Yep.
So it's quarterly report from July to September. And there's comparisons from last year to this year. So the amount of calls for volume has gone down. Last year this time, there was 594 calls. This year, there's 467, so down 130 calls in West St. Paul, so which is good. That being said, we did see some upswings in in districts of property and property thefts under 5,000. And that's mostly in the construction areas where, you know, at night, you know, people drive through and they're in stealing stuff. So we've been trying to do extra patrols and I know the construction guys, they've hired impact security to drive through as well because I've seen them going through there. We're hoping now that it's starting to cool off, all these thefts will sort of die off a bit. Sort of in the summer when things are warmer, more people are moving around. And the price of lumber and everything's going through the roof, so, you know, thefts are out of control. But the construction guys know that they need to lock up their tools, lock up their lumber. They've been putting their forklifts on top of their lumber if people want to steal it. But it's happening everywhere. It's not just in West St. Paul, East St. Paul, Selkirk, St. Conyness, Winnipeg, it's happening everywhere. That being said, you know, the calls we get that report this, there might be more, that they don't report this more, there's just a few boards missing, right? Like I said, we do as many patrols as we can. Unfortunately, a lot of times, if they see lights coming, they scoot away, right? So, you know, we try to do the best we can. We did see an upswing in people coming through trying door handles and stuff as well, especially in the trails here. Just because it's so close to the city, they just come under the bridge and they're coming through.
Messing around with those as well, I've seen some videos.
Yeah, they work their way up. So we've been watching for that as well. Once again, hard to catch those guys because when we drive by at night, they see lights coming, they duck, they hide, we don't see them. So we rely on a lot of the community members with their doorbell cameras, videos on their houses. So we reach out to them for whatever video we can to try to find these people as well. We have caught a few and the worst part is they go to court and it's rotating door and they're right back. So that's frustrating on our side too. They haven't built a new jail since, what, 60s? I think that's part of the problem, the jails are full and we have no place to put something. But moving on to a little better stuff, our committee policing officer, Constable Paul Hume, he's been working with the schools. He's been giving vacations visits this year. He said that he wants to come to your next meeting in the new year because he's planning a big event for the 150. So there's supposed to be something big next summer happening. I don't know all the details he's organizing for us. So probably see him at the next meeting as well. And that's about all I got. Do you have any questions?
What do you guys hope for a rotation of driving through, you know, is it something scheduled, driving through the communities or?
It's not scheduled, so the guys on the road at night, they do their patrols, looking for impaired driving, speeders, people failing to stop at the stop signs. I was explaining to them earlier that, so we're working out of River North, East St. Paul. So typically, there's two members on shift at a time. But we are amalgamated with Selkirk where they'll have six members. On the weekend, it's double shift nights, so it's double the members. And they do come back and forth and help each other out. So there is increased coverage. There's no set patterns, we just, whenever we can drive around, we drive around. If we're out on the road, we tend to try to go back to the detachment on a different route. So we sort of cover as many streets as possible. Once again, it's a big area, it's hard to cover all that area. I know we get a lot of complaints from the public saying, "Well, we never see you, we never see you."
Yep.
Well, we drive through, I never see anybody standing in the front yard either, so, you know, it's hard to be seen if you're on outrage. And we try to drive slower to be seen, but like you said, it's a hit and miss whether, people see in the middle of the day, but at night, people are inside watching TV, they don't see us, right?
Yeah, the reason I ask is, you know, I live in Legends and, you know, I see lots of members there, you know, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning doing radar or, you know, traffic services. But then, you know, it would be helpful, you know, obviously that's a revenue generator. I hear pipelines roll back for drunk driving area from other members that lives by me. You know, one area I know that I have lots of complaints was on Rossmore. Even when I was campaigning in the middle of the day, there's those two stop signs east of McPhillips. You know, people don't even touch their brake, right? It's 60K, you know, so if you guys on those like Cali there, if you guys sat back 30, 40 feet and, you know, it would, it would travel like wildfire, right? As soon as a few people got some tickets there, you know, I think for a little while it would help again.
For sure.
So, that's just a couple of comments that I uttered. You know, I know you guys have a very difficult job, I would never want to do your job, so you're never, you're never going to make everybody happy, but, you know, I am, I'm a night owl, so I do see you guys come through, come through Legends occasionally. And like I said, I'm always out late and I talk to, you know, I'll pull up and talk to an officer if he's there and just say who I am so that he doesn't become just some weirdo, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks for your service.
Constable Buscetti?
Yeah, if you can just, we were talking last term, so just to refresh us, do you have some GPS checkpoints that you, your cars pick up through West St. Paul?
We do, and then we do those downloads, another guy in the office does downloads, I don't know how frequently he does them. I wonder if you guys want those, we can download them. I think they're usually done quarterly or?
Yeah, it was usually coming quarterly, but can you just like refresh us to where they are so that when people do ask us, we can say, well, we do get reports to this area, that area. Like I know Sonova was one, McPhillips and Grassmere is another, there's?
Yeah, I can't remember all of them specifically. What I'll do, I'll get a download done and I'll send them to you guys, I'll get you updated with the downloads or?
Just so they, people see like we do have something saying they are at different times coming up with that. And it's not the officer that's clicking on there, it's picking them up passing that area, so.
And I know I've met with previous council about having your bylaw officer having a marked vehicle. So when he drives around, it's more visible that there are more presence in the community. Because right now, he drives around in a white truck and it just looks a white truck. He doesn't have a uniform, he doesn't have anything special. So even just having some decals on there, something that just sticks out that says, hey, somebody's patrolling and looking over for us makes a big difference as well.
Constable?
That was it for me, thanks.
Constable, you have any?
Yeah, thank you, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Sergeant, for the work you do for the RM. Just a question regarding COPP, Citizens Off Patrol Program. Do you, is there, are there, in New Year's in the neighborhood, are there Citizens Off Patrol groups within the RM? Do you guys work with them?
There is, there's, they report to Paul Budman, our community policing officer as well. I haven't seen the reports, but it's basically, it's volunteers, they'll drive around. Well, so I have, I've seen a few reports, I haven't seen any recently. But they just basically, they're out more in early evening, they're not out late at night. And then they'll write down plate numbers, AC. We need more people on COPP for sure and willing to drive around later in the evenings because that really helps out as well. And that's the big thing, anybody in the communities, if you can get a plate, we get calls, oh suspicious vehicle, this gray car drove by. Well, without a plate, you know, it's hard for us, even when we go to a patrol, like how many gray cars will there, there's tons, right? So it makes a big difference if we get plates as well, so.
Thank you.
Councillor Kleiber?
Just through the mayor, I, so one of the things that I'm on Grassmere Road, that I'm on the McPhillips side. So I see a lot of racing, car racing right past my house. We hear it on the perimeter as well in the summer, there's a lot of racing. And we're, the other one we have is Northumberland. We share Northumberland, Mr. Pagtican, myself, and Miller Road. Those are thoroughbears from Main Street to McPhillips, so they're hotspots. Especially in Northumberland, it only has one little stop sign and then people just get around that road. We wanted to put some radar signs out there, I think they're on order, they're just basically watch your speed. But just a hotspot is definitely, right now, Grassmere calms down, but in the summer, it's like, it's crazy. I've chased people down the road and said, "What are you doing?" And they're my neighbors and I'm like, "Why are you going 120 on a 90?" Like, it's really, and some of them have ended up in my front ditch too, so that's always, not always a good thing. But something to watch out for in Grassmere and McPhillips side because it's?
So what I'll do, I'll pass this on to, Selkirk Traffic Services actually moved into the East St. Paul office as well. So I'll pass it on to them to do extra patrols and run radar over there as well.
Yeah.
Because I know like our guys, they try to like set up and move around, but like I said, there's only two minute time, right?
Yeah.
So, but traffic services, then that's more bodies that can be put over in that area. And it's better because now they're out of the same office, so our communication is so much better with them. They're supposed to be tied to the perimeter, so as long as they're within a certain distance of the perimeter, which is, that's our area, then it's perfect, they can do those patrols as well.
So Grassmere, Blackdale Road is also one, it's a hotspot. They come from, they come from McPhillips and they go around that corner.
Because that's one of those?
Grassmere goes around the corner of Blackdale and then they really speed there. A couple of questions, theft of property under 5,000, you're talking about the housing industry when you're talking about the construction industry?
Yeah, it's mostly the lumber, the contractors and stuff, stuff taken.
Mischief to property, what would that constitute? Is that just going into cars and stealing change or what is that?
Yeah, it's that or there's damage to property like fences or anything else.
Vandalism?
Vandalism.
Okay.
People ripping up people's yards, striking across them and things like that.
I noticed our break and enter to residents has gone up. It went from two to five. What are you seeing there?
You know what, nothing really stands out with that. We've had one of those, I know it was like a vacant house, somebody came into. I can't remember the other ones, but they were, nothing really stood out.
And the collisions reported, well, property damages, just accidents?
Yes.
Or accidents? So everything is down?
Overall, the calls are down, like I said, it's down 130 calls in that quarter, which is really good.
Yeah.
It's just with construction and being close to the city, I think we're just drawing, you know, that.
People that aren't catching.
Yeah, we just need to make those extra patrols and, once again, highway patrol being out of the office, I've got them keeping eyes open for stuff as well and trying to do these areas, so.
Well, thank you for all you do, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anyone have any other questions?
Can I just bring up one? You brought up the doorbell cameras, is there something that we can attach on our newsletters or contact with the COPP group? And if we can get videos of, from people in the area where stuff happens, if they have doorbell cameras that they can forward to you?
For sure, yeah, just put it in newsletter, any, any videos that they can download, whether it's off their home security or their doorbells or whatever else they have, captured trail cameras or whatever. Feel free to stop by the office and drop it off or give us a call, we can come pick it up.
Just, I remember when that fire happened in the trails, all of a sudden, the next day, there was seven, eight videos going around on it. You're just surprised, I'm sure all of us were, you know, you're campaigning and you're talking to people through their doorbell because it's every second house has one on there, so.
Yeah.
A lot of problems with those doorbells, if people, cars go by, you're not catching plates, right? But it does help if you get descriptors of vehicles and then you can watch out for those vehicles, definitely helps out.
I do.
Do the same vehicles come back rolling over again, are you liking it? Or is it just one of us?
No, we see a lot of stolen vehicles coming out. People will steal a vehicle, come out and they'll do the break-ins or whatever, steal stuff and then ditch the vehicle. So, which makes it hard as well.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Thank you for your time. So now we'll move down to item 4.41. Which is the municipal office, Public Works, and Sonova Center holiday schedule. So, does anyone have any questions on the schedule? Holiday schedule? Councillor Kleiber?
Well, on the first section, so our Public Works, I understand, is under unionist and, but our municipal office is not, right? So under the union, if we're closed on a stat, then the next day is Day in Lua, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm wondering why we're closed on the 27th as well? Is there a reason why we're closed on the 27th?
I'll leave it up to, just to grant, to answer those questions.
Yep, so what happens in the, in the public sector at a hydro in the city of Winnipeg or the RM? They get Christmas Day and Boxing Day?
Okay.
Or the stat holiday, so if Christmas lands on the weekend, that holiday moves to, to the, you know, the Boxing Day would move to the Tuesday and the Christmas Day would be on the Monday. So if it lands on Saturday or Sunday.
And then my other question that I have is the Sonova Center schedule, the 24th and the 31st. And I'm just wondering if we can adjust that schedule so people can get out earlier? Like their start time is normally 8 o'clock, can we adjust that, say, 8 to 2 so they can go home for Christmas instead of making them stay till 4 o'clock? I don't know how many people are going to use the Sonova Center on Christmas Eve. And if there are no functions on the 31st, can we let them go home at 2 o'clock? Have them do their six hours, but have them go at 2, 8 to 2, is that an issue or?
I don't think it's an issue, but this will, this will come back to, to council for a resolution to pass. So what we'll do, I think we do is DeMara keeps stats on it every year.
Yeah.
So I'm good with doing that, but why don't I ask DeMara and then I can give that, based on that input from DeMara that she has on, on usage?
Yeah.
Then I'll make, you know, I can make the change to do 8 till 2. If she says, oh no, you know, people are using it all afternoon, you know, I'm not sure what the kids are doing, right?
Actually, that would be nice to them too since it's Christmas Eve and they might want to go home.
Yeah, so.
You know, so if they start earlier, they can leave earlier.
Yeah, so is that, should, would you like me to check with DeMara for stats or do we want to?
Yes, five minutes please, yes. Anyone else have any questions? Oh, Constable Buscetti?
Just on that, I think we used to close it earlier and sitting on recreation, we used to get the complaints that why does the rink close? Because we'd close it at 2, then they have to shut the rink down because they have to have somebody, I believe somebody in the office manning it to say the rink is open.
Okay.
So people are coming out on those, if it's not 40 below like it was last year, three feet of snow, but families are coming out on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, kind of doing the family skate, that kind of stuff. And then when we're not having a person at the Sonova Center or Access Center, whatever it's called now, we have to say that the rink is closed.
Okay.
It's just how they schedule it.
Alan?
But other rinks are open, are they not, like community rinks? Like you could go to a different rink, right?
Yeah, I, we just have it, it's just listed on the Sonova that the rink is closed and once the office is closed. I'm just, just from previous years with recreations of.
And it would be one of our students or casual staff there that would be there, right? I'll ask DeMara for some stats and then I'll report back to council on it.
Yeah, I just want to be considerate of staff too because, I mean, it's, it's Christmas Eve, so I'd like to see them have some family time too. That's all the questions I have.
Anyone else have any questions? So I got two questions, one of them is on December 23rd, Public Works is off on noon. Is there a reason why that is? Why are they not working four days?
Well, what we've been doing and practicing a lot of jurisdictions is on, on Christmas Eve, they let them go home at half day. On the New Year's Eve, they let them go home on half day. So we've been doing that outside of the contract to, as a gesture to staff to say, we appreciate the work, et cetera. And it's, it's like a bonus for them. So we've done it in the past, but.
I, I think like Christmas Eve is on the 24th. And this is on the 23rd, which is a Friday, so we're having a half a day off. So they're off on half a day Friday, then they're off on Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. So for four and a half days, there is not going to be anybody in Public Works. And normally, over Christmas time, there is always some sort of snowstorm coming on. Last year, there was one that was particularly bad. And I think we should see if we can try and change that schedule a bit so that they're not four days off. I don't know if we can, sort of like have half the staff come in on Friday, work Friday half a day, and then they can have Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday off. And the other half comes in on, so they have, takes Friday off, the other half takes Friday off. So they're off Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday.
Okay.
That way, there's only.
And come in Tuesday.
And come in Tuesday, that way, there's only three days that there won't be any downtime. And I guess is also, is there sort of a backup plan in case there is a snowstorm that we have to call somebody on weekends?
Well, our, our snow clearing staff is, is, is part of the, the job for snow clearing is, they're on call, they know if there's a snowstorm, they come in. So we, we have a policy with the service level that we meet and we've been beating that service level and meeting the snow clearing within, usually within 24 hours. The, the perception from the public is it's, it's when do we, you know, when do we actually get out there? We wouldn't get out there while it's still snowing. Because, you know, we'll clear the streets and then they will pile up again. And then we also have to keep in mind that if these guys are, are clearing for 20 or 22 hours straight, it becomes an issue for safety, so.
So I guess if it's still snowing, does that mean Public Works stays home till they come into work?
No, no. No, we, we, well, not all of them, right? So, so we'll have, we'll have one set of staff that comes in, you know, say it's snowing overnight, we'll have some, we'll have a, what we call a ghost car. They will go out and check intersections and that and find some areas or have, you know, bigger drifts than other areas and that. They'll record that and then we'll get like one loader out earlier to make sure intersections are closed. And, or, you know, more if needed, but then the whole shift goes out. And there's a, a shift that goes down Main Street and does all the settlement by main. There's a plow truck that does up and down west of McPhillips and the Northumberland's and the Slaters and that. And then we contract out some work, so we have a mix of it. And that's what they, they do with the city of Winnipeg, they have a mix. So we have in, in the new areas, we contract out that snow clearing.
Okay.
And you, you keep a mix, you keep a mix, so you always have, you always have a hand in the business. You don't want to put that totally in, in private hands because then the prices could rise and you don't have any of your own equipment to say, well, those prices are too high, you know, we're going to do it on our own. You kind of, you know, at the city of Winnipeg, they've had some problems where they kind of got out of the snow clearing business. And then you're at the, you know, the mercies of private contractors. So we like to have a, a mix when we're doing it.
So for this Christmas season, would you look into see if we can sort of split the time off so there's only three days down?
So what we'll do is maybe we'll, we'll give different, you know, maybe some of the staff will go on the front end, get some time off and some of the staff will go on the back end.
Yeah, right, split it up and then, and then I think, you know, most people get the 24th off. This 23rd, I mean, you know, for me as a taxpayer, I take a look at this and I think, you know what? Like, why should they get paid for that day when I have to go into work? Right, like that's what I think, and I think if it's not necessary, they get the Friday, they get the Saturday off. All day they have that off, so I would like to see them stay the full eight hours that day.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, this is for committee of the whole, feedback from council and it comes back for, you know, to, to the next meeting for the resolution.
Okay, and that's.
So we'll fix that up.
Anyone else have any questions? Oh, none, okay, so, next is, okay, one more. Next is 5.1, monitoring report from Rockwood Propellant Plant. The, pardon? Are there any comments on it or does anyone have any questions on it? I have to open it up. Did you want to speak to it?
So the, the report from the Rockwood Propellant Plant is, is a, is a big book, right? And they do an annual report, actually at, at some point in, in the years, the report was getting sent to the, to the RM. And, and when I first came here in 2010, there was no report, I wasn't even aware of, you know, the propellant plant problems. So the reports are coming out every year now. You don't, we, we haven't seen, I've talked to them, there's been no dramatic change. But, but what it is, is rocket fuel had gone into the ground in Rockwood. And it went through the underground, it seeped through the underground and it has TCI's, whatever, which are cancer causing chemicals. And what they did, I believe in 1992, is they put three pumps in at the location where it leached into the ground. And those pumps are constantly pulling back these dangerous chemicals. When they're underground or they come through the groundwater, they're very dangerous. If you can pull them back through the pumps, they go into the air, if they go into the air, they disappear into the air and, and that's it, it's done, right? So we've had movement in the past of this, it goes into about five RMs in the Hutterite Colony. So it moves back and forth, right, depending on the year. So right now, they have everything under control in Rockwood Propellant Plant. In the almost 13 years that I've been here, we had one situation where it was starting to, the plume was starting to move. And we were put on alert by the health officials for the region that we might have to do a drinking water order, so boil your water. So that's, that's what I know about a Rockwood Propellant Plant. It has test sites all over, all over the area from Rockwood and they test the water annually. And they also have put in pipes, so there's some piped water out to certain homes within that area. But you cannot drink the water from your well if you're in that area, they, you need to boil it. I think there's about five homes in West St. Paul that are directly impacted. Hundreds in, in Rockwood.
Where are the homes in West St. Paul? Russian?
Russian Road.
Right at the, at the border.
Okay.
One of them is directly, was very close to the orphan plume area. And so they actually have to cart their water in, you know, well, that, counselor back again, but there's one that has no water service, they have to bring their water in. And they were, so they're directly affected, so they're right here, right? And there's the orphan plume right there.
Okay.
So because they're so close to it, I think that's the issue. I think that Ward 3 is the most affected area.
Yep.
And they didn't have too much in there, it was pretty good. But when I read the report, it's really the Hutterite Colony that tested high on one well. But they're using a drag culture somewhere, 235.
Any more questions?
Just a quick question, would it be possible to ask the author of this report to come in for a presentation?
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
Any other questions? Okay, so next we'll move on to 52, enter East Endal Lake Watershed District Financial Statement, year-end, March 31st, 2022. If you want to speak to it.
I have no comments on it, it's an arms-length party. We will be coming to, to council that there's an expansion going on.
Yeah, they want to, they want to build it, right?
Yeah.
And they want to, can you, do you, you know more about it or do you need some?
Well, they, they want to, to, to expand and. And so they have to get all their partners to to contribute to it.
Yeah.
So they're waiting for, you know, the election was on, so they're waiting for a number of 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 RMs to commit. I think, you know, so that's one decision council will have to make. And the other thing that's always been under question is the percentage of West St. Paul's contribution. It it's it's high, Selkirk's low. You know, we we've asked in the past for, can you explain our contribution and they haven't been able to. So, you know, we can look at that and I think that we should be finding out more about the formula. And then council can decide, you know, whether we we want to to move forward to this expansion. And we can ask the 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 director to come in and speak to it if we want.
Okay, are we obligated to contribute to this expansion or?
I don't believe so.
No? And council panel?
Yeah, to the mayor. So I'm noticing all these fiscal grants, I looked through them and they were in a deficit this year. And their funding strictly comes from grants. So it's a problem, it's a Manitoba grant, it's an RM grant, like a municipal grants and then other grants. So they're funded solely by grants. And so I think the grants from different RMs is is critical for them. But yeah, I think that you're right, that there has to be some understanding of what percentage of is being, you know, is it is it an even percentage that's coming out of the all of the RMs that are contributing to this? What's the distribution? But it concerns me when I see deficit. But I think the one thing that I noted on the revenue is that the revenue is down. So when you're looking at a deficit and the revenue is down by fifteen thousand and they're in a deficit of eighteen thousand. You know, I I would be asking some questions as to, you know, do they have enough funding or is it spending or what's going on here? For funding an organization, we should be asking some of those questions, what happens? So if they come in and give us a presentation, I guess we can get more information.
Okay. Anyone else have any more questions? So we'll look into sending out the invitation?
Yeah, I'll I'll give an invitation to come in.
Okay.
And and they they put on a, they were through West St. Paul earlier in the year and they put on a little presentation and we'll show it was. It was well presented and they do a lot of really good work.
So should we be sending them some of our questions at the same time so they know how to answer or?
No, I think they would.
They'd be able to answer on the spot?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I think we did send them the request on how to, the breakdown of the percentages. Cause like if you look at City of Selkirk's paying ten grand and we're at twelve grand, like that was the one I think we brought up previously with them. And they never got back to us.
Yeah, they.
Well, if you look, sorry, generally dropped there by sixteen grand too, what they were paying for some reason.
Yeah, generally drop substantially. So are, may I ask through the mayor to the CEO, are these municipal grants voluntary?
Yeah.
It's what you want to give?
Well, they have a formula and it's and it's based on on a a formula that's been around for a while. And the the RMs have continued to give on that formula. We've asked previously, what's the basis for the formula? How do you come up with the formula? You know, the the unfairness of one want, one RM would pay less than the other. What's the rationale behind that? So that's what we'd be looking for. But we belong to this group, so, you know, as belonging to the group, we do have a responsibility to to contribute. The, you know, and it'll be good if they come in because then they'll be able to describe to to council what they do. So and and what they do is is they do a lot of things in the community. And it would be good for for council to know, like, there's been contributions. I I I believe West St. Paul School got a large number of trees from them. But West St. Paul School never told us the, this group, they never announced that they were doing it. And we kind of found out by chance that they were doing it. We also will have a person on the committee that can be a liaison for it too. It's one of our committee groups.
Okay.
But I will invite them in.
Okay. Any more questions? Council?
No. Oh, good, thank you.
Nothing? Okay, so that takes us down now to the question period. We have fifteen minutes for those in attendance. There's. So are there any questions that you have related to the item?
Does it have to be related to tonight's agenda?
It says that it should. Does it have to be?
It's up to you, man.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I'll just go ahead and pass it out. My name's Ralph Link, I'm resident of West St. Paul. I'm concerned with what I see as the ongoing buildup of traffic at Pipeline and the perimeter. Since I've been back to work on a term contract. At seven o'clock in the morning, the traffic in either directions as far as you can see. Then there's what we affectionately refer to as the retaining pool that has been built on the southeast side of Pipeline and the perimeter. A massive amount of dirt is all filled, been hauled in over the years. And this retaining all like mound has been built around it. I've talked to the people at the province, they don't know anything about it. I've talked to highways in terms of the province, they don't know anything about it. There seemed to be some indication that there is long term consideration for putting an overpass there. What they refer to as a delta, delta overpass. Has count, well, this council or any past council or or the CEO, is there any correspondence? Is there any information going on? Do we have any knowledge at all about what's may happen at that corner in the future? They've increased the traffic flow there, resulted in more fat, more accidents, it was pretty, pretty serious, there was one there just the other day. I, it's kind of a wide open situation.
Sorry, the accident the other day was a drunk driver, just so I'm not sure if you're aware of that or not, the one in the morning?
In the morning?
Yeah, it was a drunk driver.
Collision, rear end collision?
Yeah. It was my neighbor that he hit, so, yeah, they got the guy.
They did?
Yeah.
Yes, although that's, I appreciate that information, but the accident still occurred.
For for sure.
I I don't know, I would just like, I would like to know if there is any real long term plan about doing something to increase the safety of that corner. Because as I see, it's becoming increasingly dangerous.
That's on Pipeline and?
And the perimeter.
Over there.
East, northbound and southbound. And some of the antics that I've seen and recorded on my dash cam, in particular on northbound, absolutely frightening.
So do we have to get in touch with Manitoba infrastructure or?
So here's what, here's what I can tell you on, they do have land reserved. So the delta overpass, so on on the four corners of the Pipeline and the perimeter, that land is all reserved. It's 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 owned and purchased by the province already. So property owners on that, on those four corners, they cannot build on on that property. They did have an open house. What what the province calls an open house is they have websites with engagement. But Donovan Taves from Landmark Planning, they they've done an open house, so it was advertised, there's there's slides you can get. But now the province is coming back and they're doing another series of these and 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 it's about safety on the perimeter, right? So now they're coming down the north side and that's where you've seen some intersections getting closed off. You know, Holmes Road got paved, right? Because they they sped up the the safety and and they're probably ten years ahead now. So there's another one that will be going on, I'm just in the process of helping the province get all the addresses and and names so they can send out later letters to people. So they'll be sending letters out to people all the way from the the bridge going into East St. Paul, all the way out to to Pipeline Road and in and and bringing those people in for engagement, telling them what they're doing in that, so.
You you just said that all four corners are now owned by the province?
Well, they have public reserve on them, yeah.
Okay, are you aware that there was signs up there last year asking for a variance on the height of a house that was built on that lot? Are you, you know the lot I'm referring to that has all the fill piled around the the outside edges of it?
Uh, no, I'd have to.
At the at the corner of Pipeline and the perimeter, on the southeast corner.
Southeast corner. Yeah.
Okay, there were building permit or signs up there asking for a variance on how, that they could build the house X number of feet higher than what was required. So I'm not questioning your.
Yeah.
Statement, I'm just, there seems to be an inconsistency there.
Yeah, I'll I'll look into it. I I mean, we're dealing with the province and MI, so so we've seen, you know, on PTH eight here, right? They had a number of things on Main Street. Or PTH nine on Main Street, they had a number of things they were gonna do. It's it's, they have multiple departments that are working on highways. So it's just not one department that's doing it. They have different branches, like a regional.
Yes.
And they, you know what I mean, right?
Yeah, I talked to the fellow that's in charge of the north side.
Yeah.
Meaning nothing of the lot that I spoke with.
Yeah, and and same on on McPhillips, right? We're dealing with them on McPhillips with that, so I'll look into that. There shouldn't be anything going on because they've reserved all that property so they can put an intersection in or or.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, so I I'll look into that, I'll contact.
Take a drive out there, it won't take you long.
Yeah, no, yeah, okay.
Council, you come?
Thank you.
Sorry, I think I can, I know which exactly this property you talk about, cause I drive by it, you know, ten times a day.
Sure you do.
So I I think that the variance that was there was actually for the property next door. You know, I may be wrong, but I'm pretty sure I'm right, it was for the property next door. And that's that property was just being used as a mud dump, cause I know the companies that were hauling in there. So that, there was no plans of building anything on that property at all, it was the the house directly to the east of that property.
Well, the signs were sadly displaced then.
Yeah, they were, they, well, there was, there were signs up there about it being used as a mud dump, right? To see if anybody had any objections, but the.
The only signs I'm referring to are the ones, the yellow ones that were on Pipeline side and.
I know, yeah, I know which ones you know.
And asking for a variance, I I'm assuming you stopped and read the signs.
I did, yeah, yeah.
Council, call, call?
Yeah, I I just did a survey myself with Engage Manitoba on safety on the perimeter. And the proposed changes that they want to make, especially, I know that Donovan Taves came in and did a presentation to us. And there was a, there's two scenarios coming off of McPhillips onto Holmes Road now with the bridge, behind Grassmere Restaurant and then another proposal as well, hooking onto Holmes Road and then cutting off the access to perimeter. I still have concerns and I I echo the concerns of our our resident here, Mr. Link. Is even if we cut that off and we have a thoroughfare going through from Holmes to Pipeline, we still have the problem at Pipeline. Because people coming off of Holmes don't have a lot of room to come onto Pipeline. So we've got the school there, we've got Dashmash School. And at certain times of the day, we're gonna have all those people coming out of Dashmash, going down Pipeline and and going over to, you know, going down Holmes going over to Pipeline. It'll be interesting to see how the province is gonna navigate that because if it's gonna be one way trafficked over to Pipeline, then we've got a problem. If it's traffic both ways, it might be better because we'll have some come back to Grassmere and we'll have some go over to Pipeline. So there's there's definitely a concern there, but I don't think we have any answers yet, as far as I know. So I think that was something that we had in the last council and we were waiting for answers on that and waiting for the problems to come back. As that council was shedding, nodding his head as well, and we're just still waiting for it, still waiting for answers from them. So I know if anybody is wanting to in the community to go to Engage Manitoba and do that survey of what they want to see, the more engagement we have, the better.
Any other question? Any, okay.
I I'm just wondering if council is aware that on the homepage for West St. Paul, if you scroll down on the homepage, you'll see the logo for East Interlake Watershed District. If you click on that, there is quite a bit of thorough information about East Interlake Watershed District that's presented. So if you've got some time and you're inviting our lawn, perhaps reading that information on our own website will help guide discussion. Any questions?
Any other question? Kate?
Cause we talking about the perimeter and Pipeline, there's a real danger there. Traffic going east on the perimeter, turning onto Pipeline and then turning onto Garden View. Because that's the only axis, that whole development has two axes, McPhillips and Pipeline. The problem is when traffic is stopped at the light and semi trailers are making the turn to go into the development. So they have to block the highway and hope, like, nobody leaves the space open, everybody's bumper to bumper. So they're not leaving a space to turn onto the Garden View. So and following traffic is always all of a sudden, they they think that the truck is gonna make the turn onto Pipeline to go south. But he stops because he's going onto the service road of Garden View. And many a times I've seen like, just about an accident and it's gonna happen. It's a dangerous spot and it's, I don't know, I don't understand why they couldn't have built a deceleration lane at the road crossing that they had at just about at Ames Road. They left the one on the north side of the perimeter for the for the houses on the north side of the perimeter to use that to get onto the highway. But for all the large trucks and everything, they could have had a deceleration loan road and they could have come in off the highway. Not damage that road that was never built for heavy trucks. I mean, it was a class C highway and they just put more gravel on it and keep grading it and grading it and hoping it's gonna withstand. But it doesn't, they graded and then two days later it's all smashed up. So there's a real accident pretty to happen. So just stop bringing up the date.
Yeah, no, thank you very much.
Is Garden View provincial or is it city?
Garden View is, my understanding is three. The road from Second Street to Ames is highways. Then there's City of Winnipeg from Ames Road to Pipeline. And Ames, from Garden View from Ames Road to Pipeline is City of Winnipeg. And the corner of Ames Road that comes out to Garden View is municipal. So there.
Million lies the problem.
Try to get something done, I mean, like it's, you know, it's just.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
We may as well finish the loop here. Norma Albert, first I'd like to congratulate all of you on the on your win and look forward to the four years of you serving the community for us. I have a question related to question period, actually.
Kate?
Because certainly understanding the the implications of the pandemic and we've all come through it and in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one where there was, it just changed all of the world and and all of our actions. But once we got into twenty twenty two, back in January, I contacted the administration because I guess as I was coming out of the cloud of the pandemic as well, I realized, wait a minute, I could ask a question if I wanted to because I have come into some of the planning sessions, the planning hearings and been and been a presenter with questions during the hearings. So it's the same process, Zoom calls. So I asked to come into question period on a regular meeting. And the answer that I received was that question period wasn't going to happen. But it is still on the agenda and I understand that it it has to stay on the agenda because it's actually within the bylaw, the agenda is established. So I asked of the administration. So I asked of the administration, under what authority is, are we now not conducting public question period? And I didn't get an answer to that question. I was only told that in the future it was intended to reestablish it when we come back in chamber, so I'm thrilled that this is happening. But it's, it's a little worrisome to me to think that there could be some decisions made that generally should require some resolution of council, but it didn't seem to come to council.
Okay.
And I think I see similar situations with other items on the agenda where it's not always a resolution by council and that, that's worrisome to me.
Okay.
So I'm wondering how that decision was made. Maybe I can have an answer today.
Okay. You're talking about during the COVID?
About question period, yeah.
Can you answer that question?
It was the council of the day was making that decision.
It was a.
It wasn't an administrative decision, it wasn't my decision.
Was it recorded? Was there, was there a resolution for it?
No, no, went into COVID and we, we, we didn't do it and, and then it continued to go and the, the plan was when we were to come back as, as we are today, we would continue question period.
Well, our Trujan, I don't recall that, but it just wasn't done.
There was no resolution?
I don't recall a decision.
There was no.
Council Rashidi, do you recall a decision to get rid of that?
It's just.
Nope.
I think it was just more of a deciding how we're doing it when COVID hit. It was kind of a scramble to go, okay, how are we doing this Zoom stuff back and forth? And we didn't start with that question period being included in that and we just kept it going the same way through that. I, I don't even really know, we all really made how the, how the decisions all made it through, through the COVID times because we were thrown on it like we did, we renovated the whole room and then all of a sudden COVID hit. And I think it was a big challenge for admin and everybody that was sitting at the table to learn how are we getting through this, so. I, I don't think it was purposely done. There was other municipalities that weren't even broadcasting meetings through that whole time, so were they getting away with it and should that be all challenged at the same time? So were things done maybe a little bit on the quick and let's just get this done, just to learn how we can go through COVID? Maybe, but I'm sure there's a lot of things that would change. Let's knock wood that it doesn't hit again and we have to go to that stage. But I think there's a lot of things that we've learned. I don't think any of us signed up for COVID, the pandemic and trying to run a municipality and learning how to do it all, staring at each other on the screen, so.
Okay.
But it was impressive how the RM was able to conduct good planning hearings. So to me, I didn't see the difference between doing a regular meeting with question period and a planning meeting with a citizens coming in to, to present. It was the same technological issue and it had been resolved very nicely by the RM for the planning meetings.
Can I just comment on that?
Bones?
Also during a planning meeting, we are, we were also more prepared because you're being prepared for presenters having more staff for the planning meetings than having it during our committee of a whole or our regular scheduled meetings. Our planning, we know we, we have to have presenters to, to speak for and against and on their, on their application. So I think it was at the same time looking at, okay, how many evenings are we having full staff in here to do this? Because it's, it's just presented a differently. And with the planning meetings, we have to have the staff because that's how eventually we have to do the planning part, so.
Council, finally?
I, I would just say there's no excuse for it. We need to be accountable for what we didn't or did do. And we just have to, you know, say that going forward, we're going to do our question period. And, you know, apologize that we didn't do it and move forward and do it. You know, that's why we're doing it tonight.
Good.
So apologies if you wanted that and it didn't happen.
Don't need it.
We're gonna make it happen. Go forward, we'll change it.
So the problem I had with it was that most of the municipalities were all opened up already and questions were asked to open it up and it wasn't opened up till now after the election. And that was actually hindering the public from coming in and voicing and making statements about different plans because sitting on the computer and trying to get time in and it's just not the same.
Yeah.
You can't have a discussion because the people don't interact. But when I'm here and listening to what she says, I have a thought and the next person has a thought and the conversation expands. But when you're not allowed to come in, that, that, this is the whole purpose of it, isn't it?
So yeah, roll endeavor to have question period in the future. Okay, last question?
Further to question period.
Okay.
I believe there's a question, well, I know there's a question period on, me with the whole meeting. And there is a question period on the regular meeting, but I don't believe there's one on the regular planning meeting, which is the second meeting of the month. People, I believe that the bylaw that governs the procedures now currently states, I'm pretty sure that questions have to be related to the agenda. Well, if you've got a question on the planning meeting, when do you get a chance to ask it then? If there was no question, question in that planning meeting, very different.
Do you understand what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
I, you know, I, you know, you've been on council, so have I, so have I. When people have questions for the planning subjects, you come up and say who you are and you ask, do you not, right? So what's, I'm not sure what you're.
I'm saying there's a question period in, on this agenda.
Yeah, I see.
There is no question period in the regular planning agenda. There's a question period in the regular planning agenda. Three meetings, two out of three have a question period.
Question period.
And they must currently.
I'm not sure what you're saying there.
Currently the policy, or not the policy, but the bylaw says that the questions must be related to the agenda. So questions can't be related. So I'm on the planning because there, there's no, there's no opportunity for it. So what I'm saying is I think having a look at that issue during the time when you review the procedures and the bylaw, that would be one item to have a peek at.
Can I clarify that? There are several items on that agenda of a planning meeting that are not a planning agenda. There are other items.
No, I understand that. I think, like they said, we have to look at it later. We might have to re-jake some of these things. Planning meetings might be too long with all the things on the agenda, so it, it is something that we will be looking at.
Yeah, no, thanks for the comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are good points and I think this council will look at those and to see if there's any gaps. Typically though, from what I know is that regardless of the planning, there's items on the agenda and people can register to speak to the item and ask their questions and hopefully they're addressed by, either by the elected officials or by the administration or by the applicants slash developers. But yeah, I mean, there's a, you make a good point in the back about the other matters that are not on the agenda regarding public hearings. So we'll, we'll definitely have a look at that and see if there's any gaps.
Okay, so that's it for question period. Now we'll just adjourn the meeting. We thank you for your attendance and for your questions.